Good evening. My name is Greg Ferris and president of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees. I hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is now 6:00 PM and certified the decorum is present that the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. The next item agenda tonight is item number three, which is closed session. So now it is 6:01 and we will be dismissed into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071, 551072, 551074, 551076, and 551089. No voting will take place in closed session. No open session items will be considered at this time in the meeting. Thank you. My name is Greg Ferris and for some of you who may have been here before, the beginning of this meeting may be a little different than normal. We would like to thank the 89 Texas Legislature for creating some new protocols we have to follow. And so tonight, at this time, I'm calling our first meeting back into open session, which began at 6:00. If there's no further questions from the board, I'll now call this first meeting closed. And I hear none, so it is closed. Now we'll transition to our second meeting of the evening, which begins at 7:00. I'm Greg Ferris, president of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and hereby call this meeting to order. We do certify the form is present and the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by the law. Although the monthly meetings are open to the public, these meetings and personal comments will be shared during the time for the audience to address the board. We're moving on then to our invocation, introduction and meeting this evening. David Ivey, if you would come to the microphone. David Ivey from First Presbyterian Church will lead us in our invocation. If you'd all rise, please.
Dr. Terry, trustees, I'd like to invite anyone who would like to pray to join me in a spirit of prayer. Let us pray. Holy One, we pause and remember you as the source of life and the giver of all good gifts. We thank you for the gift of public education. We thank you for all the employees and volunteers, administration, teachers, staff, who show up every day, who work hard and do their part for the students and for the greater good. We ask your blessing on this meeting tonight and always, as we continue to meet the challenges of public education, as our community continues to grow and we experience so much change, give us your grace that we might seek first to understand, share a word of kindness, and see each other as you see us, giving thanks to you in all things. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor and First Presbyterian for being partners of Forney ISD. Moving on to our next part will be a recognition of our Students of the Month. Ms. Chrissy Crabtree, principal from Griffin Elementary, will introduce our elementary student of the month, followed by Bree Malone, principal of Ray Intermediate, which will introduce our secondary student of the month.
Good evening, board. Dr. Terry, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Aiden Burke. He is a fourth grader at Griffin Elementary. He is the son of Christopher and Lauren Burke and big brother of Beckham. Aiden is a member of the Griffin Leadership Team and lives the Griffin Mission Statement every day. The Grizzlies will always strive to have a positive culture that encourages the growth of all stakeholders. When I asked his third grade teacher, Ms. Oldacre, about him, she had this to say. Having Aiden in my classroom has been such a joy. He follows directions the first time given, always with such kindness and respect. Aiden is a constant source of support, ready to help me or his classmates whenever needed. His competitive spirit shines not only during recess, but also he strives to achieve his goals in the classroom. I cherish seeing his smiling face every day. He brings so much positivity. Aiden is an incredible leader and I felt fortunate to have had him in my class. His fourth grade teacher, Ms. Aaron, said, "Aiden is a great leader. He's always willing to help out when someone is in need. He is kind and always includes others." When Aiden is not at school, he spends time playing football, basketball, and playing video games. It's my honor to recognize Aiden Burke as a Griffin Student of the Month.
Good evening, board. It is my honor to recognize Mackenzie Bershier, a sixth grade student at Ray Intermediate. Mackenzie is our Student of the Month, and I'd like to share a few special reasons why she is our student. Ms. Olgin has had her for two years and stated that she's witnessed her remarkable growth, not just academically, but as a confident and compassionate leader. She consistently sets a strong example for her peers, embodying the qualities of a true role model. Her other teachers all said, "Mackenzie is a standout student whose positivity and dedication shine through every day. She arrives with a warm smile, a can-do attitude, a genuine eagerness to dive into her work. Her willingness to support both her classmates and her teachers makes her an invaluable presence in the classroom. She is often the first to volunteer when help is needed, stepping up with enthusiasm and without hesitation. Her proactive mindset and sense of responsibility make her a trusted and respected member of our school community. Beyond her leadership, Mackenzie's kindness and empathy are evident in the way she treats others with respect, warmth, inclusivity, and especially toward new students. She exemplifies what it means to be all-in at Ray, thoughtful, dependable, and driven. I'm confident that no matter what Mackenzie will go to do, she's going to continue to leave a lasting impact wherever her journey takes her, and this is why we chose Mackenzie."
Please stand for our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
for some recognitions.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, I am presenting a donation in the amount of $5,639.67 from the volleyball boosters toward the Forney High Volleyball Program and their expenses for your approval.
Board, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Second? Ms. Burke Alter? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call Ms. Leslie Rader, Chief of Elementary Leadership and Learning, to the microphone for some recognitions.
Good evening. To help us celebrate this success, I'm going to invite Mr. Enrique Holai. He is our Director of Multilingual Learning in Forney ISD, to share the journey that these students have been on.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Terry, honor guests, families, and staff. Tonight, we have the distinct pleasure of recognizing two outstanding dual-language students, Jaslyn Zambrano, formerly of Wilson Elementary and now at Jones Intermediate, and Gabriela Perez Bacot, who attended Jones Intermediate and is now at Warren Middle School. Last year, both students qualified for the regional and state Spanish spelling bee competitions, earning their place at a state by winning at the regional level. Last March, Jaslyn and Gabriela placed among the top three in their respective categories at the regional level, earning the opportunity to represent our district and region at the State of Texas Spanish Spelling Bee held this past July in El Paso. Through hard work, dedication, and perseverance, both students advanced to the state competition, an impressive achievement that reflects their commitment and skill in Spanish literacy. The Spanish spelling bee is a meaningful event that celebrates and promotes bilingualism and bilinguality, essential skills in today's global society. In Forney ISD, the competition also encourages academic excellence, builds confidence, and public speaking skills, fosters cultural pride, strengthens metacognitive development, and unites our community by bringing together students, families, and educators in support of a shared goal. Each year, Forney ISD dual-language students in grades three through six, as well as former dual-language students in grades seven and eight, have the opportunity to participate in our district's Spanish spelling bee. Winners move on to Regenton's Regional Competition, where for more than eight years, our students have consistently placed among the top competitors. Winners of the regional competition advance to the state Spanish spelling bee, representing both Forney ISD and Regenton. Jaslyn and Gabriela's success is a testament not only to their own talent and determination, but also to the unwavering support of their teachers, school, and families. Please join me in giving a warm, rounded applause to Jaslyn Zambrano and Gabriela Perez Bacot. Congratulations to both of you.
Jaslyn, can you remember your hardest words you had to spell? What was it? Thank you for being here, though. Chris, come back to the microphone, please, and make another recognition.
Yes, it is my honor tonight to present one of our Forney Family Awards. The Forney Family Award goes to people, organizations, that represent the very best of our Forney community. And before I call our honorees up tonight, I just want to share a little bit of information from their annual report to talk about the huge impact they're making for our families. The school uniform exchange started in the spring of 2018 through the First Presbyterian Church of Forney. Since then, they've helped over 4,724 students with over 34,450 dress code items. With a conservative estimate of $5 an item, they've saved Forney families over $172,000 since 2018. This does not include all those lost and found jackets either. Last year, they served over 1,100 students, which was a 32% increase from the previous year in the number of students served. Just since July, with our eighth annual back-to-school giveaway, they've already helped 559 students with 4,056 dress code items and 564 non-dress code items, such as jackets and spirit wear. The exchange is open every single Wednesday for our families from 2:00 to 5:00, following the Forney ISD school calendar, and items are given free of charge to all Forney ISD students. At this time, I would also like to add in that our Presbyterian Church has also adopted Jones Intermediate, so they've been a tremendous community partner for us. I'd like to invite up David Ivey, Dana Curry, Linda Jones, Penny Harper, and Deborah Welch, who volunteer countless hours to make this happen for our families, and thank them with a Forney Family Award.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seven, a public hearing of the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Mr. John Chase, Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance, will come to the microphone. At this time, I need to ask for a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Have a motion?
I'm going to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chase.
Politicians for jumping the gun there. So, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or First Rating, as it's otherwise known, is published every year for each school district and charter school in Texas. Now, the purpose of the rating is to measure the quality of financial management practices and improve management of financial resources. So, the rating we're going to discuss tonight was developed using the financial data that was submitted for the 2024 fiscal year. There are 21 indicators in the rating system, and they're divided into three main categories, which is critical solvency, financial competency, and the last thing is a rating of A, B, C, or F can be assigned. Starting with the critical indicators, they're aptly named because failure to meet any of these standards will cause the district to receive an automatic F on the rating. The criteria includes submitting the annual financial report to TEA by the established deadline, receiving a clean audit report at the conclusion of our annual financial audit, making timely debt service payments, and making timely payments to the teacher's retirement system, the Texas Workforce Commission, and the IRS. The solvency indicators measures the district's ability to meet its short-term and long-term financial obligations. These indicators include having a positive net position, having general fund balance stability, having cash sufficient to meet its current obligations, having short-term assets sufficient to meet its short-term obligations, having revenue that exceeds our expenditures, having total assets sufficient to support long-term liabilities, and having the ability to make future bond payments. Spending on administrative cost is below the established ratio, and then finally, the student-staff ratio having stability with that. And then finally, the solvency indicators measures the district's ability to meet its short-term and, excuse me, this is, the financial competency indicators measures the district's ability to successfully manage the district's finances and make informed financial decisions. And these indicators include our projecting our average daily attendance appropriately, having data quality that's submitted to TEA that agrees with our, in our financial audit, having no weaknesses reported in internal controls, reported, having no reported instances of material noncompliance in our federal grants, and having the required information posted on our district's website, our financial information, like our budget and our audit reports, and some of those tax rate information. Discussing changes in the state, federal, and local funding within 120 days of adopting the budget, as the boards are aware, we have budget workshops throughout the spring, and we discuss this at length. And then finally, having, not having any adjusted repayment schedule for any overpayments in state aid. So, in other words, being able to make those repayments in the year after they occur, as opposed to, you know, stringing it out over a period of years. So, I'm happy to report tonight that the district did receive an A rating. Our actual score was a 92, which is two points higher than the prior year. We're really happy to report this to the board, and if you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Is there any further questions from the board? I hear none. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Mudiya?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. It's now 7:22, and this public hearing is closed. Moving on to reports, the next report items require no action from the board. Item 8A, Notice of Intruder Audits, there's no findings to report there tonight. Moving on then to public forum, item number nine, the board will hear comments from the audience only during the public comments portion of the meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their name and the topic of the public comments sign up prior to the start of the board meeting. The board will allot six minutes for tonight's public comments portion of the meeting. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to address the board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, and other community members by name. Board requests that all comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, a decision, operational issue should present this complaint through the appropriate mechanisms, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers who provide details of a specific complaint will be stopped and will be referred to the district's administration for information about the grievance process. The board may not respond to comments made or questions asked from the public. At this time, we have two speakers. We'd like to ask them to come to the microphone. First, we'll take Kathryn Winslow.
My name is Kathryn Winslow, and I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about something that has a real impact on students, schools, and communities across the country, the National FFA Organization. In Forney ISD, we have two very active FFA chapters. FFA is more than blue jackets and livestock shows. It is a program that teaches leadership, real-world skills, and opens doors to many career opportunities. I have seen this growth firsthand. Earlier this year, I was one of three students from Forney ISD to catch at the Fort Worth Stock Show calf scramble. That gave me the chance to start my breeding heifer project, which has been one of the best experiences of my FFA journey. Each month, I communicate with my calf scramble sponsor, manage budgets and records, and research how to best care for my animals. This project has taught me perseverance, time management, and responsibility, which are skills I will take into the future. FFA has also helped me grow as a leader. When I set the goal for running for district office, my advisors supported me. They helped me improve my public speaking skills and boost my confidence in order to achieve this goal. Now, as your first district officer to come from North Forney, I get the opportunity to work with students from other schools and run events at the district level. My story is just one example. Every FFA member in Forney ISD has their own journey, whether it is showing animals, competing in leadership events, volunteering, or serving as an officer. Together, these experiences shape students who are confident, capable, and ready to make a difference. That is the power of FFA. It gives students the chance to explore their passions, grow their skills, and gain confidence to succeed in whatever path they choose. FFA is not just an organization. It is an experience that changes lives. I'm proud to be a part of such an active chapter in Forney ISD and excited to keep representing FFA and our community. The FFA motto says it best, learning to, oh, sorry, doing to learn, learning to li, I'm so sorry, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. These words guide everything we do. So, today, board members, I would like to invite you to see FFA in action. Come to one of our upcoming major shows and watch the hard work and dedication and pride that goes into our projects. Thank you.
Next, I'd ask that Paige Brock to the microphone, please.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow community members. My name is Paige Brock, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the students involved in the agricultural science and FFA program across the district. I have been heavily involved in the Forney ISD FFA program for eight years, and my student has been an officer of her chapter for three years. I would like to address the current policy limiting students and advisors to only excuse 10 school days for competitions and show. Frankly, this limitation is a slap in the face to the students who choose a career-focused, hands-on educational path, one that not only builds character and life skills, but also opens doors to scholarships, leadership roles, and further career in agriculture and beyond. While athletes routinely, excuse me, while athletes routinely excused for games, travel, and tournaments, often with full school support, ag students are being penalized for pursuing excellence in a different arena. And I want to be clear that these competitions and shows are not just clearly casual trips. These are vital and career-building opportunities. Success in agriculture isn't measured by how far you can throw a football or how many points you score. It is measured by your placement in a judging contest, quality of a livestock, and your leadership at an FFA event. And more importantly, many scholarships, internships, and post-secondary programs look specifically at how these competition results handle and your participation. By limiting these students and advisors to just 10 days, we are effectively telling them that their path, their passion, is less valuable than others, and that is not support. It is clearly what Forney ISD should not, is not what Forney ISD stands for. Our ag students wake up early. They work hard before and after school and during holidays. They represent our school with pride and professionalism. They deserve the same opportunity as any athlete or performer to compete, grow, and earn recognition. Forney ISD strives to always be future-ready. The FFA program is the best example of this. Texas Tech states that 82% of students who have taken an FFA course state that their high school performance impacted their career and decision, and 93% of FFA alumni have attended either college or a trade school. I respectfully urge this board to revisit this policy, expand the allowed days for agricultural competitions and shows, and give our students the opportunity to thrive, not just in the classroom, but in real-world experiences. Next time you go to Walmart or Kroger, just think, if you take agricultural out of the store, what would be left? Thank you for your time in supporting our students.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. The next agenda item is the consent agenda. 10A is approve the minutes from August 11th, regular board meeting. 10B is approve the budget amendments. 10C is approve the resolution regarding review of local investment policy and investment strategies. 10D is approve the 2026 public information request holiday calendar. 10E is approve resolution and adjunct faculty agreements with Texas A&amp;M. 10F is non-sustaining amendments of 25, 26 student code of conduct. Board may take action separately or collectively. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burke Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item number 11, consideration possible approval to convene a facilities naming committee for elementary number 12. Ms. Zaskel?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. With the upcoming opening of elementary number 12, the school board has the opportunity to designate names for school campuses. According to CW Local, the board shall call for a facilities naming committee and appoint five names to serve on the committee. After receiving recommendations from the board, administration recommends a committee listed in the board's the committee listed in the board book be tasked to develop a list of possible names for elementary number 12. The committee shall be tasked with the development of a list of recommended names under the guidelines of CW Local. A list of recommendations from the committee will be submitted to you for consideration at a regularly scheduled board meeting. The board shall then select a name. The responsibility for the final decision in naming facilities rests with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Sastopol. Dr. Cherry, do you have any further comments?
You know, this is something we always look forward to, is listening to our community, and they've always done an excellent job of recommending great namesakes for our board, and we have no doubt that the team that you've recommended will do the same again for elementary number 12. So, excited to convene the committee.
Board, you've heard the administration. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the facility naming committee as presented and tasked superintendent to solicit nominations for future schools in accordance with CW Local.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Ademudia, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item number 12, consideration possible approval of DOI amendments. Dr. Stormy Lamond, Chief of Staff.
Good evening, board. Mr. Ferris and Dr. Terry. Before we get into DOI, I want to share a quick history lesson with you of DOI, or District of Innovation. DOI, or District of Innovation, was started in 2015 as a result of the 84th legislative session, allowing Texas school districts to gain exemption from certain provisions under the Texas Education Code to increase flexibility and local control, giving traditional public schools the same flexibility that open enrollment charters already had. And so, that is why this is such an important thing, that it just gives that power back to us and our local control and our community to make those decisions of what's best for our students and our staff. So, I want to share with you, we brought together the District of Innovation Committee, which is made up of campus and district administrators, teachers, and community leaders. They met in August and voted unanimously to move forward with some changes that we want to share with you this evening. First, we needed to update our Fornie ISD board goals. We still had the six, and so we're moving back to the four. And second is, as a result of the 89th Legislature and House Bill 6, there are certain exemptions that we can no longer exempt from, and so we need to remove the exemption of a behavior coordinator. And then they had four amendments that they would like us to consider. Additional requirements for grievance policy and procedure, commissioner standardized GPA rules, acquisition and appeal of library materials, and planning and preparation times. We would be exempting out of these four pieces. And this decision reflects commitment to innovation, flexibility, and continuous improvement. It also ensures alignment with the district's goals and supports the needs of our students and staff. If approved and once approved by the board, the administrative regulations will then be created to clarify the processes that Fornie ISD will take in each of these areas. I will pause and see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, do you have any comments?
Appreciate Dr. Lamond and our committee that has come together to make these recommendations. Just want to remind you that the statute legislation actually gives very strict guidelines as to how the DOI process functions, as well as what can, what statutes can and can't be exempted out of. Therefore, we've worked very tightly with our general counsel as well, and she will help us also to draft these guidelines as we have done in the past. So, we would recommend approval of the amendments to the DOI as presented.
Board, you've heard the administration. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the board approve the amendment to the Fornie ISD DOI plan as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ademudia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 13, consideration possible approval with Talte Special Utility District for lift station operations and maintenance services to serve the Learning Academy and the transportation facility. Ms. Kim Morsec, Associate Superintendent, will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Board, as you will recall, part of the donation agreement with History Maker Homes for that area where we built FLA and the Transportation Center was for us to build a lift station there. We have built that lift station and are working with Talte Sud for them to maintain the lift station for us, and then for any future development that's there as well. As we work through that contract, we're asking for the board to provide, Dr. Terry, the authority to negotiate the contract and execute it as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morsec. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Recommend approving the agreement and allowing me to work through the negotiation of that contract to serve that lift station for those two facilities as presented.
Board, you've heard from administration. May I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that we approve entering into an agreement with Talte Special Utility District for lift station operations and maintenance services to serve the Learning Academy and transportation facility, and delegate authority to the superintendent to negotiate and execute the agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item number 14 was taken earlier this evening, so moving on to item 15, consideration of approval of request for sanctions of educator certification to be submitted to the State Board of Educator Certification due to employee abandonment of contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board hereby find Carrie Walker abandoned her employment with Fornie ISD without good cause, and direct the administration to take the necessary steps to seek sanctions against her educator certification.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Ademudia, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item number 16, consider approval of contracts for personal services pursuant to House Bill 3372, as discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move to approve the administrative contracts for personal services as discussed in closed session, finding that the contracts will harm the district. The arrangements do not present any conflict of interest, and the services will be performed entirely on the administrator's personal title.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it? Mr. Johnson, okay. Okay. Dr. Ademudia, all right. Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 17, Dr. Cherry, I'll turn it over to you for announcements.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure if we can get there in time, Robin, but we do tonight have a college fair, correct? Over 100 colleges over at the OC welcoming students and providing information to parents and students tonight. So, if you hurry, you might be able to get there. But we also have a, just a reminder for those attending our Tazbe Conference this week, we'll be departing on Thursday for that. It is down in the wonderful world of Houston this year. We also have our upcoming monthly school board meeting on the 6th, and then would go ahead and let you know we are going to look at a special call meeting on November the 20th. If you'll check your calendars for that and let us know. That should be right before the Thanksgiving break. So, Mr. Ferris, I think that's all we have this evening.
Anything else the board has? I hear nothing else. So, at 7:40, we'll call this meeting adjourned.